I will open the school committee meeting for December 15th. If we could stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Introduction to members.
Tara Larkin-Milville.
Tammy Lemieux-Blackstone.
Erin Bonaco-Milville.
Dan Keith-Blackstone.
Carrie Goddett-Blackstone.
Ted Novio-Milville.
Jason DeFalco-Supervisor.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if our student reps are coming. If they come in, we will absolutely make time for them. And looking for a motion for consent agenda A warrants minutes of meeting from November 17.
So moved.
Motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving consent agenda A, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Unanimous. And we have time for our first public forum. If anyone's here to speak to us in public. Thank you. And our first school committee item is student recognition. We have a very elite member of our marching band here today. Tori, Mr. Schaefer, if you want to join us at the table. And Lisa, too, please. You've played a major part in not only our marching band, but as Tori's mom, supporting her through all of her adventures. If you want to tell us about Tori's accomplishments, that would be...
So what she just did is the end of a really long process. What happens is every year Tori auditions for a group of select musicians in Worcester County, which has about 72 participating schools. And every year she cleans house, gets the highest trumpet score, that's a given. And then from there, she gets selected and move on to the all-state, which is against all the top trumpet players in the state. And the last few years, she's basically cleaned house there, too. And then what happens is every other year, they offer this all eastern, which is 11 states, District of Columbia, actually some students from Europe. And what they do is they look at basically your resume, more or less. They look at, you know, you have to be in all-state, but how high were you in all-state? How many years have you been in it? And then they go by the recommendation of the people that run these festivals. And so we applied, and Tori did unbelievably well. And she's second chair in all eastern orchestra. So the way it works is if you're a trumpet player and you get into band, then you're really good. If you're a trump player and you get into orchestra, you're one of the best out there. Because with orchestra, they only choose three trumpet players in the whole area. So this was the last step in a huge process. And in my 22 years, she's the first student that we've had that have made it this far. And we've had a few students get into all-state, obviously a man has. But to get to this level is unheard of. This is really something special. So, and for Tori, because she will never say this, this is just one more thing to put on her resume. She has paved the road that we've never seen paved in terms of her accomplishments, the talent, what she's done. It's really special.
It is really special. I feel that this recognition isn't enough, but we definitely want to recognize you for that. I also want to point out that it was so exciting when we were watching the Macy's Parade and with our family at Thanksgiving dinner. We had to rewind it, watch it, rewind it, watch it. Because, and I don't know if it was Lucas that said, "Well, of course she was going to be on TV." I'm like, "No, do you see how big that band was?" Of all the people they zoomed in on, it was you. And that was meant to be. And, I mean, our band has been known nationally for a very long time. But for you to represent our school and our band like that, it was a very proud, very proud day for us. Very proud to see this, to watch you continue.
Thank you.
And I know a younger trumpet player who looks up to you more than you even know. So it's a small town with a big band, and it's nice to see someone with the recognition that you're getting.
Thank you.
So we do have a certificate of recognition for you.
I'm going to grab a picture, too.
Gladly present to you.
Should we get together?
So what this means is that now, April 13th to 16th, she's actually going out to Rochester where they're having this festival. And she's playing as part of this huge festival with students from all over the place. So, and then their final concert is April 16th in Rochester, their beautiful hall, that Rochester Philharmonic and Eastman School of Music, they all use this one hall, so.
And do we need to arrange for your Disney flights from Rochester?
We come back, what, Sunday and we leave Tuesday? I'll be doing all my stuff in the hotel room in Rochester. I would just like to say, as a mom, at Macy's Day Parade for Tori, it was very conglomerated with people, as you can imagine. And wifi wasn't working very well because we were kind of right where they were going to be filming them for TV. So the parade ends and we walk back to hotel, and my phone like lit up because I wasn't getting any reception at all. And everyone from the town was sending us videos and pictures. And it was just really cool to have that part of us, to be able to have that. I got video clips, and we saw Tori and all sorts of Facebook messages. So it was really cool to be in New York, to know that everyone here was supporting her. So I thank you guys and the town for that. That was amazing, as a mom.
Any opportunity for us to watch the all eastern?
I'm not sure. I don't know.
I can personally video.
Facebook Live?
Because we haven't had a student do this before, I'm not sure what this looks like, yeah, so.
And Tori, are you pursuing music in college?
I'm trying to, yes. She's being humble right now.
Share what you found out today.
I passed my pre-screening into Northwestern, out in Chicago, Illinois. Yep.
Wow.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sure there are many others on the list, but congratulations.
Thank you.
Keep us updated, please.
I will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Feel bad having to follow that with this.
Moving on, we have school committee policy.
How exciting, I get to follow that with school committee policy.
Tammy, it's all yours.
All right. So again, this has been circulating for a little bit. I apologize. I could not get here for the last couple meetings. But the changes for the section C of the policy manual are based, again, on the recommendations of MASC and language that's been updated for various reasons. A lot of the changes are to be sort of gender-neutral language, as you can see on policy CB, as in boy, and some others. I'm just trying to flip through. I mean, if there's any questions, I think there was one. Yeah, just district. Yeah, most of it is just using the word district versus system. And then, you know, again, a lot of change to the gender-neutral pronoun. has been removed totally from the MSAC reference manual. It's towards the back, it's like the third from the back. Tracy Nowick, our MSAC rep, did say that they were removing it because this language is kind of inserted into our, into like more procedure-type things of our school handbook, so it doesn't need to be in the policy manual. And then CL, which was the other major change, combined two into one version of administrative reports. Goodness, that top writing is small. Where's Matt? Is Matt secretly hiding? So again, this was at MASC's directive. There's nothing major coming in or out, so.
Any questions? Any questions for policy?
I just, I wouldn't be me if I didn't say it. When you referenced section CB as being gender-neutral, you said CB, B as in boy.
Well, isn't that...
It is still, it is still the first letter of the word boy.
Your reference itself is not gender-neutral, that's all. I just wanted to point that out for the record.
Oh, God.
Blackstone, beef of Blackstone. That's right.
It's actually Bravo, if anyone...
Bravo.
I know, I don't know. Anything that starts with the letter B.
That's all I have, over and out.
Thanks, Dan. All right, so looking for a motion to approve the policy manual section C as submitted. Motion made by Tara, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any other questions? All those in favor of policy manual C as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any ayes? Unanimous. All right, moving on to the report of the superintendent.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you all. We have quite a few items in my report this evening, but I would like to start and open with an introduction. Dr. Chris Taylor is one of our consultants in our school system, but also is part of the Influence 100 program, which is an initiative at the Department of Elementary Secondary Education, working with aspiring superintendents. So I have the pleasure of working with Dr. Taylor, not only as a consultant in the district, and has been with us for a couple of years now, but also in her role as an aspiring superintendent. So, Dr. Taylor, thanks for being here and welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. It's great to meet all of you. And as Dr. DeFalco said, we've known each other for a couple of years now as a consultant, working with the leadership team here. And so this summer, had the opportunity to ask Dr. DeFalco to serve as my mentor in this aspiring superintendent program, and he agreed. And so it'll be two years. We'll work together in some professional development together, some research together. And then I'll be shadowing him, doing his work as the superintendent. So thank you for having me, and great to meet all of you. And if you have any questions of me about my background, or if you want me to share more, I'm happy to do that.
Has he let you know what his calendar looks like?
I know he's a busy man.
When the shadowing comes, do you not feel obligated from the, what, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, 7:00 PM days?
Yes, yeah. He's an early texter and an early riser. Some of those.
So what is your current role?
My current role is I work for William James College. I'm the Director of DEI and Education Leadership. So I work with schools and districts, like similar to here, but I also lead and direct a principal prep program for the college. And so some of my background is that I was a teacher, was a school principal. I worked in the district office, I worked at DESI. And then I recently came to William James College to pursue this work and work in districts and schools, so.
And you're aspiring superintendent.
Yes, so I did a doctoral program. I completed it in 2018, and that was an aspiring principal program, I mean superintendent program as well. So I just want to stay in the circle of the learning and do the, I love the cohort model. I didn't necessarily have a mentor, like I'm hoping to have, you know, in this fellowship program with Dr. DeFalco. You know, you have people mentoring you, but I'm looking forward to this two-year opportunity to look at it again from the lens of leadership from a district. And in a different district, you know, this is new for me to be in rural settings. Most of my experience is in urban. So, yeah, I'm just trying to stay in the circle of learning for, you know, hopefully maybe one day of being a superintendent.
You're smart to look at it twice and make sure. It's great work. We're excited to have you.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree. And I would just want to say that having been through here, two different superintendent searches, I appreciate that you're taking the time to do it in this manner. Because seeing the realm of the applicants that came in in the previous years, I think this will look phenomenal on a resume, in my opinion. You know, having that lens. Whereas a lot of applicants come from the principalship and want to take that next step, but may not have that full lens and look at it. So I do think this will certainly benefit you and any school that you do end up working for.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that.
And following Jason's work will definitely give you a lot of experience.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else have any?
That's great.
Well, thank you in advance for the time you're going to put in with our district and the work that is being done.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. And it's been a pleasure working with the team and with Jason all this time, so I'm looking forward to it.
She's done some really good stuff.
I would love to see her at the end of the two years. No, and see what your, you know, true thought is on it.
Yeah.
What did you do for DESI?
I worked in turnaround. So I was a part of the statewide system of support. So they call it SSOS. So some of my work was working with schools in turnaround and in receivership. So I know that's not like pleasant to hear, but it taught me a lot about how you use data, how you work with teams, how do you, you know, work with some of the tougher things that can be challenges to student learning, so.
It's all applicable. And, you know, so there's big T formal turnaround work, but every district and school has, is in some level, shape, or form of, you know, kind of refining and improving and strengthening. And we call it a little T turnaround, you know, with some of the work that we've been doing. So it's, yeah, it's great. It's the same work, right? It's just like at a different kind of scale.
Yeah, room for improvement everywhere, right?
Absolutely.
It's a good lens.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Let us know if you need anything.
Thank you, welcome.
Good night.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to have an update. We haven't had one in a while, actually, from our Director of Learner Support Services, who these days is wearing many different hats as we navigate through our year. And we have our President of our CPAC also joining us tonight. So thanks so much for both, for helping you for being here.
So I know I introduced Sarah before, but this is Sarah Peters. She is the President, our Special Education Advisor. I call him my President of the CPAC. So I'm glad she was able to come tonight. I know she's going to talk a little bit in a minute about our fundraising and the money they've raised so far. But I wanted to fill you in on this amazing event we just had at the beginning of December. So our conversations, we meet monthly. I come to the monthly meetings with CPAC. Sometimes it's training. Sometimes we're talking about, you know, things that are going on in the district and things that we can do. And I know one of the CPAC's focus has been, you know, more inclusive activities for all of our kids. So some of the things we, I know that they've done a touch-a-truck, and it, you know, like a very sensory-friendly touch-a-truck, and it went really well. But we've also had discussions, because our Millville Elementary, our OTs and PTs have a goal of making Millville Elementary School, and eventually all schools, what's called a unified champion school. And what a unified champion school is, and I made sure I got the right language, it's aimed at promoting social inclusion through intentionally planned activities to promote the inclusion of all. And remember, in our district, we are constantly reminding people, as a district of one, where everyone is welcome and belongs. So we were able to, the district, we were able to hold our first event. Our OTs and PTs, again, it was a combination of our OTs and PTs. We got some financial, which I'll talk about, support from the CPAC, which we're very happy in the district. We were able to have an event, and it took place on December 1st. We were very lucky, we had Spare Time Recreation in Whitemsville. We reached out to them, and they were able to give us the facility for like an hour and a half. They closed it down for this private event, and it was an inclusive family bowling night. They had given us the cost, and again, thank you to the CPAC because they donated part of the cost. So our students were able to, it was a $5 charge for the whole night for our kiddos, again, with the support of the CPAC. And it was great because our OT and PT were there. We made sure it was sensory-friendly for all of our students. Now, this was for all students. So it was a nice combination of students who might have some sensory needs or special needs with some of their typical peers. We were able to, and they were great. They shut down like the video games, the pinball, and the kids really didn't seem to mind it. We had about 30 students who came with their families. We had some snacks for them. I actually sent my husband out after to get the snacks because we wanted to make sure they all had Goldfish or some snacks. Our OT and PT set up, they have a little party room there, and they set up like a sensory-friendly area for them. And I know they did like a big chain, inclusive chains, that I think they're hanging in Millville right now. But we had some sensory activities available for the kiddos if they just needed a little bit of break. They had the 12-lane setup, and we were able to divide all the kids out. I will say, some of the parents were bummed. They came with their bowling shoes, some of them, and they're like, "Hmm, this is for the kids tonight, maybe next time." But it was really great. We saw the kids really interacting. It was actually, it was a fantastic night. And again, I want to thank, you know, Spare Time who did that. And they said, "We're welcome back anytime." And again, we can only have so many kids because we didn't want it to be too overwhelming for our students. But I thought it was great. And we definitely saw some amazing interactions. They are non-prompted, amazing interactions with our kids that was going on. So we're very happy to have that.
New friendships were built. Awesome. Very sweet to see.
Yeah. So we hope to do it again. I know I've already got, reached out from other schools, said, "Hey, we want to do that, too", in the district, so we can talk about that. But it was a really nice event for the kids. And like I said, we appreciate Spare Time allowing us to go there. And they said, "We're welcome back anytime to do another event like that." But I did want Sarah to share with you, because I know there's some funds that they've raised and some activities they've done.
So, since I was last here in June, we've continued to be really busy as a CPAC. We were selected and participated in the Apple Training Institute along with several other CPACs from across the state. And Jill, Jill was our administration. So if we get selected again, I'll probably extend the invitation to you, Dr. DeFalco, because there were some superintendents in attendance as well. So that was really cool to see. We've also collaborated with local CPACs, Uxbridge, Douglas, to form a district, regional district CPAC group. We meet monthly. That's awesome. It's going really well. It's been fluctuating in attendance, but it's been all sorts of different districts coming together and figuring out how we can strengthen our CPACs and bring in more sports. That seems to be a big one, is Special Olympic sports in our districts and neighboring districts. So that's something that will probably come, hopefully, to fruition in the next couple of years. It's something we really want to work together and collaborate with the regional schools so that we also have somebody to compete against, who also will have an inclusive team.
If you need coaches, I'm all about it. I'm a unified volleyball coach now at the high school level, so.
Awesome.
If you need help, I have a very good friend in One Socket who does the Roadie Rangers. So he does Cumberland, I think it's Cumberland, Lincoln, One Socket, and maybe like North Smithfield, they're all part of it. And he's actually taken a group to Florida to compete nationally. So I could, I have a good guide.
That would be great. What else? We hosted, like Jill touched upon, we hosted our first touch-a-truck event, which we called Truck-a-Palooza, since we had food trucks come as well. It was very, very well-attended despite the high winds from the hurricane that happened the day before. Unfortunately, we couldn't have bounce houses because we did not want children blowing away from the fields. But hopefully next year, it won't be as windy, and we'll be able to put those up. But it was really, really nice to see both towns come together. I know Erin Zeman's not here, but thanks to her, she reached out to Millville, DPW Police and Fire, and they were all there. So it was really cool to see those departments interacting together. Their families attended, too. Both Boards of Selectmen from both towns attended. Our state rep, Mike Soder, attended. So I encourage you all to come check us out next year and see what it's all about, because it was a really neat day. We had balloon animals provided by Sharon Tree Company. We had face painting. It was a really nice event. We also wrapped up our shoe drive, finally. We were able to collect over 1,200 pairs from both communities. And shout-out to the senior centers in both towns because they continuously filled up their boxes. They might have done better than some of our schools. So that was really great to have their support on that. We raised $228.40 for our collection efforts with that. With the Truck-a-Palooza event, we had raffle items donated. It was a free event. We only charged for the raffle items. And with that, we were able to raise $710. So those two are fundraising amounts. And even though we have our own account established by a prior school committee, we have to abide by state law, which means that you guys have to vote to accept the funds on behalf of us. But our treasurer already has the funds. She has them, she'll deposit them. It was easier. I don't want them. I'm not the treasurer. So, yeah, so that'll be my ask of you tonight, is to accept those on behalf of us, since we're not a private body and are technically an extension of you. Upcoming events. In the end of February, March, we will be hosting a transition planning event. Presented, it's a basic rights workshop, put on by the Federation for Children with Special Needs. And that'll, our last year, we had a workshop presented by Lisa Rounds, one of our team chairs. It was the most-attended event that we had last year. So we're really hoping one of, this workshop will be just as well-attended. It will also be advertised on their website, so all districts will be invited as well. We also will be doing another workshop at the end of January, early February. This one will also be presented by the Federation for Children with Special Needs. And this one will be called Bullying: What Parents Need to Know. So this event will be inviting to the entire district and sending out, hopefully, an invitation through you, Dr. DeFalco. I think it's very important to have that offered to the entire district. And I will also be extending the invitation to every school committee member because I think online bullying has been rampant the past couple weeks, and especially in our local town forums. There are students in those forums. They are witnessing the name-calling. They are witnessing the memes. They are witnessing the swearing. And it's sickening. And it's unfortunate that we have members sitting before me that are a part of it. And these students are witnessing it. So it'd be really nice to see if this entire board show up and support the policy that you guys set for the anti-bullying. It needs to stop. And it starts with us. You guys, we are the policymakers. You are the policymakers. It needs to stop.
Okay, but I just want to make it clear that when any of us are on our personal social media, we are not speaking as a committee member. The committee can only speak here.
Parents are seeing this. It's...
And we do have a right to our personal opinions
Right.
and platforms, so...
I get that, but I'm talking about bullying and harassment, name-calling. Name-calling, just leave it at name-calling. It needs to stop.
But it doesn't happen here in this setting. This setting is...
No, but students are witnessing it.
Is our school committee setting. But I appreciate your invitation to that event. I'm sure we will all put it on our calendars.
Is this in person or virtual?
It will be virtual. You'll have to register online. It's a Zoom meeting. And again, it's presented by the Federation for Children with Special Needs.
Madam Chairwoman, if I could, if I could, you need a vote tonight to accept those funds? If I could get those totals?
Motion, 93840.
$710 from the touch-a-truck and $228.40 from the shoe drive.
$220, $40?
$228.40.
I think it's 93840.
Just make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Dan.
Second.
Second by Chuck. So again, we're motioning to accept the $710 and the $228.40 to the CPAC. the $710 and the $228.40 to the CPAC. Any other discussion or questions on that? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And if I may, Madam Chairman, if any members of this board are going to be accused on behalf of this board by anyone sitting before us, I would hope that they would bring that documentation with them to show.
But that wasn't in a school committee forum, so I'm not going to entertain...
It was brought up in a school committee forum. So if it's going to be brought up in a school committee forum accusing a member on this committee of bullying or otherwise, that needs to be proved, proven to this.
Well, I will ask that if there is any accusation, that it be forwarded to me in email. So there's written documentation. I am not entertaining any conversation on this floor. So if there is an accusation out there, my email as the chair is on the school website. It is myname@bmsd.com. And that is not what is on our agenda tonight. So we are moving forward with the update from the Director of Learning Support.
I just want to make clear that factual information...
I'm making it clear that we're not entertaining it on this floor.
What was brought up in this meeting.
Either way, Dan, not from this table out to the public or from the public to us. We are sticking to our agenda. So Jill, if you want to move into your update.
No, that was our basic update. We just wanted to let you know that we had our first Inclusive Family Event. We definitely plan on doing more of those. And our goal is, and I really would like our OTs and PTs to come one night, just to let you know the work that they're trying to do, to again, start with Millville to make it a unified school. And eventually, the plan is to branch that out more and more. But there are certain things that they have to do to become that. And one of these events is bringing us one step forward to that, making us a unified champion school.
Well, we appreciate all the work that's being done by the CPAC for the kids, for our district. And we look forward to your next update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Next, we're going to talk a bit about our FY24 budget priorities. For our returning school committee members, you know that the meeting in December, we usually talk a bit about where we think we are headed with the development of our next budget for our next fiscal year. And then at the January meeting, we actually get into the numbers. We really delve deeply into the detail of that. And that is because we're still in the process now of collecting all of the, literally, the dollars and cents in every single one of our lines and putting together at least that initial draft of FY24. So at our next school committee meeting, you'll get a really good sense of those initial numbers. But tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the direction in which we see the district moving in as far as our planning goes regarding priorities for what's next for the system. And of course, we always start with our improvement strategy. So as our community and our school committee knows, all of our fiscal resources are anchored back to this and making sure that this comes to fruition. And when we think back to the fall and we reflect on the goals that we've set as a school system, the idea is that our budget supports that work. And that work is connected back to our strategy. So just to kind of connect all those pieces as we move forward this evening with that. I wanted to open the discussion very specifically around FY23, which might seem a little strange because we opened with forecasting where we're going in '24. But I want to use this as really an anchor slide for our budget conversations throughout this entire budget cycle. Sometimes, we refer to this as like our budget season. But honestly, we're never not in a budget season because even when we're implementing, we're monitoring, we're adjusting. So we're always working with our budget. But when we're building our budget, there are very key pieces of information, as our committee knows, that is critically important to us. And so I just want to come back and look briefly at FY23 and how we got to a place where Blackstone saw an increase of just over 3%, and Millville saw an increase of just over 1% because it took, as the committee knows, an incredible amount of work, hard work, difficult choices to actually get to a place where the assessments to our two towns were digestible. And as the committee knows, we started conversations with the town administrators in the summer and the Board of Selectmen in the fall about FY24. There were other items, of course, we were talking about, but that was one of them. Because I can say definitively, what was done last budget cycle, we will not be able to do that again. And I want to highlight exactly what I mean by that. So when you look at the first bullet point, that references the state assigned a minimum local contribution to the towns. We have no say over what those numbers are. And as you can see, Blackstone's was increased by 6.3%, Millville by 6.2%. We had nothing to do with that. That is what the Commonwealth says to the towns of Blackstone and Millville. This is what you're required to pay. And they increased the amount the towns are required to pay by over 6% in both communities. That's before the school system shares any needs. So I want to anchor those two numbers in all of our minds because remember, I just opened with Blackstone's increase was over, just over 3%, and Millville's was just over 1%. You might be wondering, how did you do that when the state increased them over 6% because of the bullet underneath? Please.
And just to be clear, that's not the same formula that the district uses to come up with those numbers. So people always ask, why is, you know, why doesn't it fall into the 78, 22%? Those are state-generated numbers based on other...
Yeah, that's a good point. And so what we saw when we got those increases from the state was, how do we put together a budget that the towns are actually going to be able to work with? If you remember, our initial, our initial budget was like over 13%. It was ridiculous. Because we had everything that, you know, we needed to do to move forward, plus the state increased their numbers on top of that. And of course, we knew that wasn't realistic. So what we did do was, it took us a little over 10 hours, but we actually looked at five years prior versus forecasted budget amounts in each function code versus what we actually spent in each function code. And we literally went line by line by line through about 150 pages to try to reduce where we could. And then, if you look at the last bullet, we looked at all of our grants. We are one of the very few districts that does this. And we get cited by the Department of Education every year for this. So it's important that people understand. We are very transparent about all of our grants. We actually put them on as revenues. When we do the budget, we are not supposed to do that. Those grants are supposed to be over here, completely separate from our budgeting process. And we get dinged every year in our end-of-year report by the Department of Education because we include our grants as revenues, and we're not supposed to. We use those as offsets. We do that because we're trying to get the assessment down to the towns. That's why we do that. Technically, those are supposed to be off to the side, and they're not even reported in the budget process to the communities. We don't do that. We changed that process five years ago. And I say that upfront only because I want to squash any conversation before we get started in this work from any community people or members or boards about, you know, school department not being transparent about our budget. We even show the gate fees we collect from the basketball games and the football games as revenue, as offsets. There is not a penny that we bring in that the community does not see when we go through this process. So I just think it's important to mention that. The other piece to this that's critically important is our Chapter 70 increase. So we saw a .44% increase in revenue from Chapter 70, which was $30 a student.
That's the minimum.
That's the minimum.
And we're expecting the same this year.
Yes. So again, look up to what the states, the top bullet, what the state said, Blackstone and Millville, you're on the hook. You have to pay this percentage more. And then, school district, your Chapter 70 increase will be this .44% more, right? So, and this literally is just straight math, right? So the numbers clearly don't jive, which really pushed us to look at decreasing any additional contribution to absorb that. So the actual additional contributions went down in both communities. And you can see, we decreased Blackstone's by 287,000 and Millville's by 127,000. Those are real dollars. We did that by using all of the grants that we have been aggressively running and going after to use as offsets and reassigning existing dollars somewhere else. And I know that I, I know the committee is aware of this because we've talked about it. But I just want to say it again, we can't do that again. We don't have that to do that again this year. As a matter of fact, our grants, many of our grants are coming offline in the next year or so. And what essentially is there as far as decreases, we just don't have in the budget, in the FY23 budget to remove it. We've already done that. So I just want to start with this. And I want to also share some of the additional offsets that we used to really reduce the town assessments the best that we could. Additional circuit breaker money, that money's not always going to be there, but we were able to utilize 175,000 of that. Our E&amp;D funds, we used 150,000 of that. Plus, you know, the 50,000 for OPEB that we put in as well. And as that number comes back, our certified E&amp;D in the winter, we'll be revisiting that number. And then, of course, our SR grants, our CDC grant, SR2 is done this year. So we will just have one year left of SR3. And the CDC grant of 130,000, that is done in June as well. So there's a lot of grants. And we knew, right? We've talked about this. We knew this. We didn't build this system around grants. We wouldn't do that. That's not a fiscally responsible way to move forward. But I just want to put it out there upfront because this school committee did an incredible amount of work to get the budget where it was last year.
And it was well-known last year during budget season, but I do feel there's been all this other stuff that, you know, since May, when our town meetings ended. So we need to make sure that everyone does remember those conversations we had last January through May with our towns, our boards, the town administrators, and at-town meeting. Because this was a lot of work then. And it, you know, I'm glad that you're highlighting it here because it almost is the base of what we're going to have to work off of for '24.
And we always find a way. We have great relationships with our Boards of Selectmen and the Finance Committee and the Town Administrators. And I have no doubt that we'll find a way this fiscal year too. But I want to make sure to remind it, use it as a reminder for all of us as we move forward. So when we look at some of the, kind of the high-level pieces that are driving fiscal '24, our student population is around 1,500 students at this time. So we have to build our budget based on our population. We are in our, will be in our second year of our district strategic plan. We are, at this point, just over 50% that are classified as high-needs. So economically disadvantaged, ELL, a special education. Our English language learner population continues to increase literally daily. Each day, we are enrolling more and more ELL students. And so we know at some point that will require additional supports. And that's great. We love and support all students, and so we'll make sure to do that. But it is important to note that our student population, over half, are in that high-needs category. Also, I do think this number is underrepresented because we are full, universal, free breakfast and lunch. We have not had to collect all of that data back from our families. These data points are the ones we do have. So my sense is our number is probably a bit higher than what's reflected here. I know we're going to talk about this a little bit later this evening, but we are still studying the district consolidation design. That is not off the table permanently. There's just a pause on that. And I know that's a separate agenda item, so we'll jump to that later. But we are still very much in that mode. We should be hearing any day now from the Mass School Building Authority, might there be a feasibility study in our future? We certainly hope so, right? So there's kind of a variable there that we're waiting on. We are staying very focused on minimizing our non-academic and academic barriers that our students have really faced over the past couple of years. But for the school committee to hear a little bit more about soon, we did just participate in something called a CELUS survey. And essentially, it's a socio-emotional learning survey. And the results were really, really good. They were really good as far as our students' overall well-being and how they feel about themselves, how they feel about each other. This was a survey that, it was optional. We had sent it to families. And I know we hadn't mentioned it all to you in the fall. But we had great participation, and we just got the results in five different domains. And we were really happy to see because it speaks volumes to the work we've been doing around social-emotional development, whole-child health, the additional counselors and social worker. We had, in some grade levels and in some schools, almost 80%, over 80% of our students, this is self-reported, which I think is the most important. This is how they see themselves. It's not how we see them. This is how they see themselves as having healthy relationships, feeling really good about themselves, their community, their homes. That's awesome. So our work in that space is really paying dividends. So we're really happy to see that our students are really making nice growth and gains there. And we actually have a measurement to share. It's not just anecdotal, which is really great. And it's right from the mouths of our students. So we'll hear more about that as we move through the winter months. We, of course, are staying very focused on our curriculum work. You will hear an update from our Social Studies Curriculum Committee. And so we're looking at implementing a new program next year and then deciding where do we go next. Big shout out to the district in general. At the end of this year, we will have completed every single core curriculum review. So by the end of this year, that means we have all up-to-date English, math, science, social studies, all cutting-edge, all up-to-date. That's amazing. It's amazing work. And a huge investment from the school committee and the community over time. So we're really, really proud of that. And so now we're talking about where do we go next, right? Do we start that cycle again and pick back up with science? Do we take a year and really look for holes in what we are doing? Or do we look at our enrichments and talk a bit about phys ed and health and, you know, foreign languages and STEM and trying to see where we might have some gaps in the arts and humanities and those types of things? So we're excited about taking on that next level of work. And so parents that are tuning in, once we finish our social studies review this year, they should be really, really proud. And they should feel really confident in the work that's being done in the classrooms and all of our curriculum. We're really excited about that. And then, of course, staying very focused on our career development programs and pathways and looking to increase our dual enrollment in early college. Much like we've done a consortium approach to our career pathways work, we are exploring what might that look like for early college. I think I shared with the committee at one of our last meetings, we have two students that are seniors that are fully enrolled, full-time courses at KCC. And then we have a variety of children who are like duly enrolled and taking classes. So we're looking at, how do we really double down on that in getting our colleges and universities to take us more seriously in their strength in numbers? So I recently had a phone meeting with Worcester Public Schools and their head of their early college program and bringing that back to the Blackstone Valley Superintendent Consortium to say, how do we take your four, our six, your 10, your nine, and actually build a cohort of kids that we can send off together? And just like we've done with our career work, bringing that regionally together. It's easy to ignore a district that might have four kids that wants to do that work. It's very hard to ignore a region that might have 40 kids that want to do that work. So we are exploring that now. The other factors, you can tell which ones I like better because I put them first. The other factors that are driving FY24, health insurance increases, transportation costs. We will be in year two of a new transportation contract. The state, the Department of Education has required a 14% increase in private school tuitions. No ifs, ands, or buts. They are requiring school districts to pay private schools 14% more on student tuition.
Is there a, I'm sorry.
Tammy.
Why? Is there like reasoning behind it? Because, you know, they're not cheap to start with?
So the feedback we have been getting is because the pandemic did such a number on private schools. So we are, now all need to work together and pay a higher tuition to help support them. So it is a requirement.
So across the board, so even if they had good fiscal management, it doesn't matter. We're still paying them a flat fee.
We are all, every school system in the Commonwealth is being... We are all, every, every school system in the Commonwealth is being required to pay their private school, private schools an additional 14% per student for tuition. Period, the end. That's how it has been communicated. I'm not saying period the end to you, I'm saying that that's how it's been communicated to us.
Sure, yeah, no.
And we have been shared, it has been shared that, you know, there, there may be some opportunities for the department to help offset some of those costs to local districts. But nothing.
We know how that works.
Right, right. And so.
We'll see it in 22 years.
We are a hold harmless district because we've had some declining enrollment. So when we have reached out on things like the Student Opportunity Act, we get the same message, which is, well, you're already getting more than we're supposed to give you. So.
Do we know what that number is?
Not yet.
Based on our, right now, what 14% of that is?
Jill and her office are working on that through their, their special education budget process. And along with that, our BIKO, our collaborative, will be increasing tuition by 10%.
So those two lines right there that Tammy just pulled out.
24%.
Are going to be increased by 14 and 10% respectively.
That's right.
And so.
And remember, the BIKO tuition I voted against.
Yeah, correct.
So that's, and lost that. So it is what it is. Like, we don't, I'm not gonna, I will be a lone voice of one on a board of directors with 14.
Didn't we just have to give them a substantial increase recently?
We did, we did 10% and there is.
It was like 90 grand, I suppose.
Approving, yes, it was over 100,000, and they're approving another 10% for this year.
Because of quality management.
Yes, another 10%. So now the budget is, at the end of this fiscal year, with this forecast of 10%, the budget will be stable.
Stable.
Yep.
Did they increase their enrollment?
They did. They are now, they are enrolling currently 188 students. We pushed them to build their budget around 190, and they are projecting 193 as of January 3rd. I am on their budget subcommittee, so I'm very involved in the budget side of this work.
At least we know where it's going.
We were hoping the increase in enrollment would actually lower. Yeah, it did just the opposite.
Right. And, and what, what has happened, I have learned, is that over time, the tuition has not increased at all. Their expenses have increased, so they've been going into their E and D funds, so it's called the general fund, but their general fund, which is like our E and D. And essentially, over time, I've depleted that. So now there's a catch-up game in the past two years. Instead of doing a gradual, slow increase of, you know, a couple of percent each year, which is what it should have been, they are playing catch-up. So I can say, sure, as I'm sitting here, that 10% is going to go through. I voted against it the last time and it still went through. So now we are budgeting for that.
So if I just look at the collaborative line on our report, that's like.
Add 10%.
$967,025.
Add 10%.
And so, so basically 10% of that, not counting the fact that it's going to go up, depending on our numbers anyway.
Yep.
Just as an example, I just want to have that, say that out loud.
No, that's great.
These are important notes that outside of this room need to understand, that these are things we have no say in.
We can't bring that back and say, how do we reduce this?
Most of slide five, and I, and I, and we separated these very intentionally, that, you know, this, slide four is very respectfully, like, this is the real work of working with kids and teaching kids, like, this is the good stuff. This we can control, this is the stuff we're trying to do. This is stuff that we, most of this, 90% of it, we have very little say over, over this. Yes, we can negotiate a bit with our, with, with our health insurance, and we will, you can bet that. But the transportation contract is set, the 14 and 10% we just reviewed, we have no choice there. Our contractual obligations is done, like, those are agreed upon contracts. Minimum local contribution, we have no say over that at all, nor do we know what it's going to be. We have no idea where that's going to go this year. Utility costs, we'll, we'll negotiate the best we can, and we're in the process of doing that. And frankly, we get energy from a variety of sources, from solar, gas, propane, oil, I think everything but wind. It's coming.
Have our kids running out of treadmills in the back.
So, I mean, we've split the energy every way possible to try to get the best energy rates we can. Even, we have two different solar providers, so, and we're looking at a third possibly. So, I mean, we're trying really hard to do this as smart as we can, but at the end of the day, we, we don't have a ton of, right? Like, our oil consumption's 40,000 gallons. That gives us very little bargaining power. But when we join with our French River Collaborative, we have a little more bargaining power because they're going to bargain on behalf of all of us. That's part of that. So we're trying the best we can to be as strategic as we can with this. But a lot of this, we don't have a significant amount of control over.
Can I, may I just add a thought to, to the increase in the private special ed tuition as well as the Bi-County Collaborative things?
Please.
When, when folks in the public, you know, on town floor, et cetera, et cetera, are comparing our district budget to other school budgets that we contribute to, they, they have very few, if any, students that fit into these categories. So they don't get hit in the same way with these increases that we have no power over. So I just, I just wanted to point that out. Because I think sometimes we get compared, and we're not comparing apples to apples, where we have a very, much more diverse population in BMR district than, you know, a high school-only type of school.
Right.
So just putting it out there for now.
Yep, great point.
Yeah, they, they probably don't even have a line for, for that. For out-of-district placements on special education.
They're probably not on the approved get-in list.
They don't, no.
Can I ask how long these line items have been in this budget, those two line items? For as long as you guys have been? Well, I only ask because what Tammy's just saying is, like, on my, on the other side of it, when I was representing the town, we, we didn't know that. You know, and that, you know, people would compare it to like, you know, the argument over North Oak Aggie, this, that, but, you know, but they would always go after BMR first and foremost, and they don't even, some of the stuff I've learned in the last year that we contribute to, through the district, that the people, they just don't, people just don't know. You know, and that's.
Right.
You know, that, you're absolutely right, where it's just, there should be a better understanding like you're doing now. I mean, that, to, to understand where the, where the, not only the tax dollar, but the contributions to the district go. They don't stay, they don't stay in-house.
Well, to that point, the, the per pupil expense in our district is, and it changes a little bit each year, but it's around 14,000, right? So 13,000, $14,000 per student, essentially like the tuition, like, if you, if you think about it from that lens versus a BBT that's over 25, 26,000. So when you look at, you know, there's a significant difference there.
And again, in that average is, and, and, you know, every time, I, I bring this up every year, and it's not attacking any students who have more intense special needs.
No.
It's a numbers conversation. But when you have a student with intense special education needs, who have perhaps a one-to-one aide, or you have a, a person riding the bus because they need support on the bus, those are all numbers that go to that one particular student. So that, to educate that one student might cost $40,000. And I'm just, again, numbers, $40,000. So when you say you have an average of 15,000 for your per pupil expenditure, 40 is going to that one kid, which means what's left for the other 1,499 is significantly reduced. Our, our other school districts that have the ability to say who comes and who doesn't, they don't, that's not factored in. You're getting whatever number that tuition, you know, $20,000 is spread out fairly evenly, although there are students with special education needs at all of our schools. But it's, this population just needs a little more love. And it costs, and love costs money when you're talking about it in a district.
And to, and to exactly your point, the charter school that also takes our students, after October 1st, once those students are confirmed in their SIMS data that they report to the state, that their, their, their tuition they get from the state is built on, they suddenly decide that they can't support that student in the district anymore. And that student comes back. So now that student's accounted in their enrollment, moving forward for their future budget. It's not in ours. The student returns to us, and we, of course, will do everything we need to, to support that student in the school district, because we love and care for every one of our kids. But know that there's a lot of those little things that districts then will do.
So the money may stay in that district for a little while longer, right?
It will.
We take it back and.
And not may, it will. We take the student back.
We take the student, but the money stays there.
And, and for the next year's budget potentially as well.
Counselled out.
Yep.
Counselled out.
Lovely.
Yes, perfect. Makes total sense.
So. So, great points, as far as, you know, those are the things that we don't have a lot of control over as we're moving forward through FY24. The budget process to date, so, you know, kind of where, where are we? What have we done so far? We've started those conversations with the town administrators and the board of selectmen. Again, the board of selectmen wasn't a formal budget item on the agenda, it was just a, you know, a quick check-in. We were talking about various school year opening items, but it was mentioned in October. Our district leadership and school committee agreed upon timeline, of course. I know everybody has a copy of that. As you know, we are without a business manager or a director of finance currently. And so we've been working different in terms of this process this year. So we do have a licensed business manager in the system, and a lot of people are concerned about that. It is me, but.
That's another.
One more nameplate on the table.
Yes. I don't want anybody listening at home thinking like, there's not a licensed business manager in the school district. There, there is. And so through this process, we've created a different, a slightly different structure, and have worked really hard with the principals and with the business office team to really talk about, like, payroll accounts, you know, payable, and to really talk about what's the best way to do this, to make sure that we capture every single thing that we need to. So we've done that. We also have done the personnel side of the work collaboratively with the principals as a team. It was really great. There were six of us, Jill and myself, and the principals sat around the, our lead coach sat around the table for about four hours, and we hammered all of this out and laid out what the needs are, rolled all the population up, who's going to need how many teachers, what that's going to look like. So we spent a significant amount of time doing that. And that was really powerful, because at the end of that session, we were able to sit down with payroll and go through, like, literally every single staffing piece for next school year. So all of that is very tightly in place. The principals then, of course, went back and worked with their teams, teachers, instructional leadership teams, their staff to go through the budget, school site councils. And we use a different system for color coding, and I only mention that here, because if you wanted to see it, you, you could, we have it. Where essentially, we highlighted anything with an increase in green, we decrease in yellow, anything that we were going to remove in red, and then anything new in purple. So we actually, if you look at any one of our budget Excel sheets, it's a little bit of a rainbow in some cases with explanations next to everything. So I just say that to the, to the committee, as we think about what we want our workshops to look like, and how might it be an easier kind of snapshot of what we want to see, we have already been trying to think ahead of that, so we can provide you with very specific targeted information. So if you wanted to see a particular budget, but you're just interested in what's been removed and what's new, I mean, I'm making that up, however you want to see it, like, we could, we could literally print that and give it to you. We've already color-coded everything. So we, a slightly different process, but we're hoping it will pay dividends on the backend when we're going through our workshop phases. Right now, we're in the midst of actually getting everything into budget sense for our fiscal '24. So we have like a little playground in there that we can build our budget and kind of play around with it. So we're in the, we're in the midst of doing that now. We hope the goal is to have a full draft done by Monday of next week. We're not meeting till January 10th, but that gives me the time next week and over the break to really fine-tune and get that, like, in a good digestible place for all of us, for our January 12th meeting. And we're still now going line by line. Did I say July 10th?
January.
January 12th.
You said January 10th.
Oh, January 12th, I'm sorry.
I was like, oh, did we schedule a budget? Maybe you're, it's a premonition, because I think we're going to.
Yeah.
I was like, wait, is that a Tuesday?
So making sure that we have everything we need ready for the January 12th meeting, not the July 10th meeting. Although we do have a meeting on July 10th.
No, not on your birthday.
We do, we do have a meeting on July 10th this year.
We can change it.
We'll change that.
So we'll be ready for that.
Even business managers need a day.
On their birthday.
We bet I have one by then, I'm telling you that. Our strategic priorities as far as materials and resources. So again, some of the high-level things that you'll see reflected in our FY24 budget, looking at that next curriculum identification, right? So whether it's we go back to science, or we look at some of those smaller, you know, pockets of issues that we still need to work through, our enrichment-type curriculum. Implementation will be in year two of our math program, so we're sure we're still going to need some additional support there. Implementation of our new social studies curriculum, we'll definitely see that continued focus on our pathways, a continued focus on our social emotional learning. I'm really, really appreciating the work that we are able to do with our community. We are, as we're doing the, the nutrition over the weekend program, we're sending home at this point about 25 backpacks full of food to our families. We've sponsored dozens and dozens of families for holidays, Christmas gifts, dinners. So anyone that's tuning in, it's not too late. If you need anything, please do reach out, we're happy to support our community in any way we can. We took our, our high school leadership group, Mr. Dusharm and I, it's about nine boys, we took them to the Blackstone Food Pantry a week or so ago, and helped organize and restock the shelves and get things ready for the holidays there. And we're actually going up to Worcester on Monday. We're taking our, our, our group up to Worcester to volunteer for three hours at a church to help get their food baskets and, and gifts ready for families in Central Mass. So we're expanding our service work, which has been awesome. So a lot of great stuff going on in that space. Continuing to create a system where all students are welcome and belong, and of course, our facilities work. So there are some big picture kind of materials and resources, you'll see these themes. Again, I hope everybody that's kind of tuning in at home sees that there are also themes here that are driven right from our goals, that our budget would support those actions. Staffing, I'm very proud to say, this is the first time, this is a very small slide, and that is because of the investments that we have done and the community has done over the past five years. We've done significant investments in this space. And what's actually on here is frankly, nothing new. We are looking to move our two STEM teachers. That work is part of our regional agreement, so that isn't anything new, but we've been paying for them through SR. We're looking to move them permanently into our local budget. And our, one of our math interventionists, this was an SR position, I want to be super clear about that, because I do want to stand by what I said a couple of years ago to the community in that they are not forever positions. This is a position that is coming offline from SR2, that our elementary school principals and staff feel like they cannot let go of yet. So of, of our SR positions, this is the only thing that is coming up, as this is something that they want to add to the budget. The rest of them are able to move forward. But this is something that we need to really hang on to. So none of these are actually new FTEs to the actual school system.
It's really just moving the money to our lines.
And then our next steps, of course, our January 12th meeting, we'll go through our draft numbers, and we'll actually get into the weeds of that, each one of those function codes and what those numbers are going to look like. And we're going to do a side-by-side comparison, we've already set it up, where we're going to have our FY23 function code amounts for each budget line versus the FY24 forecasting what we think we're going to need. So again, we'll start big picture numbers, and then when we get into the workshop, we'll actually jump into like the, into the nitty-gritty of what y'all want to see with that. Of course, our joint meeting, we're looking forward to having that with our boards of selectmen and our finance subcommittees. And then our public hearing, which will be here before you know it, will be on March 9th for our FY24. And then we'll start the actual budget book creation on March 13th.
Citing times ahead.
Yes.
Should we talk about dates for the joint meeting?
That would be great. Yeah, if you don't mind.
And what else do we need? Like, January 10? Like January 10th? What do you see us needing in January for any of this? Or do you think January 12th is going to cut it?
No, so what we have done in the past, which certainly could change. We've done the initial meeting, that first January meeting. We go over the big numbers. Then we've done two to three workshops. Then we've had the joint meeting with everybody after those workshops because then we have a better number to share. It's more realistic. And then we move forward with any last changes we need to make before the public hearing.
Before March 9th?
Yep.
So moving backwards from... So in between January 12th and March 9th?
So I would propose a joint meeting with Boards of Selectment and FinCom early February, workshops mid to late January.
Okay.
That's when all of our like department heads come in? Oh, yeah.
Yes.
They're coming like Jan and Feb, is that what that...
And we get our initial governor's numbers the very end of January. The challenge this year is that just that we have a new governor coming in. She certainly is not the challenge. The challenge, I mean it that way, the challenge is that in those transition years, the governors are given additional time if they need to. So I don't know that we're going to have those initial cherry sheets for the end of January. So that could be a wrench in the joint meeting. Because those numbers, as you know, are critical to have for the joint meeting so we can look at, you know, all the revenues and all of the expenditures that we're going to have like charter school tuition, school choice, that kind of thing.
So ideally, we should do that joint meeting before February break, before President's Day?
Yes.
We have a meeting February 9th already.
And we'll need that for like the presentation.
Yeah, we've used that sometimes as like cleanup and, you know, if we need another presentation, we've done that.
One meeting in February?
We may because of the vacation.
Yeah.
The calendar may have fell that way.
Yeah, it did. February 9th.
We have January 12th and 26th.
And then the 9th.
That's what's already in there?
Yeah.
Yes, and then we have February 9th, right? Yeah. The 23rd is a school vacation week.
Yes.
So I think that's what we're going to send to March.
Okay. So if we're planning for the joint meeting, February 13th.
February 13th?
Then we need to back up from there for our... What do you think we need, three or two?
We've done, we've been able to get them into two and then we've kept a third if we needed it.
If we need it.
Yep. So we may want to follow that. And I don't think we needed a third last year for some reason. I feel like we were able to... I thought we were able to cancel that.
I feel like we were. How do Tuesdays look for everybody?
I work Tuesdays, but I can, if I know ahead of time, I can move things around.
Or Mondays?
It is stop and shop after all.
I'm pretty flexible.
Pretty flexible.
Would you prefer Monday or Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Yeah, Tuesdays are the...
Whatever. I mean, like I said, I...
Tuesday, well...
They are the typical day of the Board of Selectment's meetings in Blackstone anyway.
Yeah. I'm talking about for our budget workshops though.
I think you're talking about for a joint, yeah.
No. So we should schedule them probably on a Monday because they already have a commitment on the Tuesday. But what time do you... Are you there until late later?
Yeah, I work 4:00 to 10:00. But like I said, I have plenty of time.
So if our first meeting is the 12th, we will be, if you want, ready to roll with a workshop on the 17th. If you want to start like that quick right after the initial, we certainly can do that.
January 17th?
Let's do it.
Yeah. So we could, if you all want to do January 17th, we certainly could do that.
The only thing with that is that it'd probably be before the presentations, but it still gives us a start.
Well, that would be them.
That would be the first presentation.
They would present...
Oh, they come to the presentations.
Yeah, it'd be our first workshop.
We'll invite them in.
Okay, perfect.
So we can group it like we've done like the elementary schools and the, you know...
On the 17th, I would be late to that meeting. 30 minutes.
So 6:30 would be good for you?
6:30, 6:45.
Do we just want to start later or should we still start at 6:00?
Whatever you guys, whatever the committee wants to do. We can work around your schedule.
Well, if we do later, would you do both or you would...
No, don't worry about me. I, like I said, I can move, I can move around things. I can move things around.
It just might be a few in a row.
Including my words.
Although we could do a Monday. We could do the 23rd.
Erin, it's stop and shop.
I actually have something on the 24th, so...
All right, so the 17th, are we saying 6:00 or 6:30?
17th.
To accommodate Chuck's need for a little time.
Coming from Bartlett High School. That's sick, leaving there.
And we actually, for a workshop, we don't actually have to have a quorum. So I say we do 6:00.
Still start at 6:00.
And that way you don't have to rush. And we're not, and if you have something that you can't move around. So 6:00 PM. And the week after, do you want to do the 23rd, the Monday?
I can't do the 23rd.
You can't do Monday.
We have a meeting on the 26th. If we want to turn the meeting into a workshop, we can just change it to a workshop.
We have it on there as a workshop.
Are these workshops going to be televised or not?
Not usually.
No?
It is a workshop already.
26th is a workshop already, I think.
Oh, very good. Okay. Oh, yes, yep, I see it in my invite there.
According to Jason's invite.
26.
And then we'll schedule our third one for the 31st, just in case.
Sure.
Yeah, that works, yep.
And then 6:00 PM and we'll leave that as a if we need it.
And then we have a...
So joint meeting, do we want to do on that week of 6th or 7th? Or do we want to look at Monday to 13th?
I'm thinking Monday to 13th.
That way we have a week.
That's right. And if we all need to do any cleanup stuff on the 9th?
And we're not doing it on Valentine's Day.
What do you think, oh, what do you think? I didn't realize that was... What do you think of that? Listen.
Listen, that's not why I don't want to do it either. I'm just saying.
I'm happy to do it on the 14th.
We're not doing it on the 14th. I'm not asking the committee to commit on the 14th. But Monday to 13th, I expect all of you to be here with flowers. No, actually, the 15th, they'll be halfway.
So February 13th?
We will invite the towns in and it won't be one of their regular scheduled nights, right, Dan? Oh, I think Monday is...
Well, it might be Finance.
I think Millville's Monday.
Oh, yeah, Millville is... We'll just have a big joint meeting on TV with everybody.
Monday, Monday, February 13th.
February 13th?
Let's see what they say. If that doesn't work for them...
I can get these dates to the town administrators tomorrow to share out with the boards and see if that Monday to 13th, it works okay. I know some had an issue with our start time.
So later is better?
Later I think is better for them.
For the joint meeting?
Yeah.
So let's see what works for them.
Yes, I don't think we'd want to set later than 7:00, so yeah.
7:00?
Yeah, I think that's what they...
That's fine.
Okay. So February 13th, joint meeting at 7:00. And then if we work backwards from this, Millville Board of Selectment is the first and third Monday of the month. So we would be fine. They'd be the 6th and the 20th.
Well, they're probably not the 20th because, well, they probably have a day off.
Oh, that's President's Day, right?
But that's fine.
Okay. So if we worked backwards from that, we would have our meeting, the joint meeting on the 13th, assuming that that can be confirmed with everyone. We would have school committee on the 9th. We would have a workshop that's on hold, I'm working backwards, on January 31st at 6:00 PM if we need it. We already have a January 26th workshop on the schedule for 6:00 PM. We're going to add a January 17th workshop at 6:00 PM. And we're going to kick all of that off with our January 12th school committee meeting on 6:00 PM. With the presentation.
That actually works well.
That work for everybody? I'll put all this in, send out invites to everybody tomorrow.
You'll fill in our calendar.
Yes.
Right now, Tuesdays are wide open and they're about to disappear.
I will send that out for folks either tonight or tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Sure.
And these are going to be strictly joint budget meetings, right? Because we're going to hear from the MSBA between now and then.
Oh, yes, yeah.
These are for FY24.
Just budget.
Yeah. If we need anything for MSBA purposes, we will schedule additional...
When do we usually... What's our timeframe when we go to their meetings? Do we do that usually in, you know, to do presentations to the various boards?
After our open hearings?
Yeah, but we'll start actual...
After the March?
After January 12th.
Oh, after January 12th.
After our meeting, we'll start conversations with the town administrators and those folks.
After March 9th, we're invited to their open hearings, right? Isn't that what they're called? That's what they are for them too?
Well, I would think, I mean, we do a lot of... We typically have a lot of dialogue in those January timeframes to get to a number that's more typically more palatable to put forth to the towns anyway, right? So that would be more February.
By the time it gets to that, it should be old news.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Okay. Anything else on...
That's a great opener. Thank you for all of the work that's already been done and the color coding.
Yeah, 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 no, we're off to a really good start, so.
I can tell you feel good about it.
I do, yeah. I feel like it's, this is going to be a good budget cycle. Next is a, we added the school district consolidation item as a discussion point just so we can have a formal conversation about it. I know I sent out communication to the school community about postponing the public hearing. Not that the consolidation work has gone away and that we're not going to not do it. It's just that we decided to hit pause for now for a variety of reasons. And those were outlined in the email that I did send. And I've heard mixed feedback from families. I've heard this is, you know, great news. Thank you so much for slowing this down. I've heard, you know, this is highly unfortunate. This needed to be done. You should have moved this forward. Why are you waiting? You're never going to get everybody. 50% of people's fine, just keep moving. And everything in between, right? So I want to acknowledge all of that feedback and acknowledge the feelings and emotions on, you know, kind of all angles of this discussion. But it's not going away. This isn't something that we're going to not do. We're just not going to do it for next school year for the reasons we discussed. So I wanted to put it out there in case anybody wanted to...
I'll just add, you know, if we did not have the hard timeline of January 1st in our regional agreement, I think it's something that we could have gotten to for next school year without having that public hearing deadline. We just need, we need to do a little more work to get there. And I think we'll be there next spring, but we won't be able to implement it because of the regional agreement wording. So I say, don't give up on us. It is something that we want to pursue and we want to do it and do it right. So we need that time.
One of the groups of families I'm hearing from the most through email and phone calls are our current 7th grade families that really wanted their 8th grader at the high school next year. So I would encourage them, apply to the Grade 8 Academy. We have an opportunity. We have an opportunity through our 8th Grade Academy that's currently running. We're going to run it next year. And so there's no hard and fast, you know, you have to have this GPA and this MCAS score and this, you know, if the will's there and the student wants to take on that work and we're all in.
Is that something we could look at expanding? Like, could they spend the day at BMR?
It would depend on what the numbers look like and how that would shake out. But I would say we're definitely committed to exploring that if we have families that are interested. That's the group I'm hearing from the most.
I believe that. I've seen a few of those run by.
So to our families listening, apply for the Grade 8 Academy. If we get a ton of interest there and we have a large cohort and there's some creative scheduling and work we can do, then we can do that, so.
Because that wouldn't need a regional agreement amendment. That would be...
That's something we already have.
It's something that we already do.
It doesn't solve the athletic piece, which is really the parents who care about that. There's a lot of benefits on the athletic side of moving 8th grade to 9th grade. Let's not kid ourselves. The academic, I mean, I'd like to say that it's academically driven, but I don't think it is. Just putting it out there for me. Ted seems to be agreeing with me. Which, I mean, I don't disagree with, but I just...
I think it would help us significantly athletically.
Yeah.
In all sports, football especially.
Yep.
So if the 8th graders were in our high school, they would be able to play?
It just, it eliminates a whole bunch of things. I mean, from some point of view, I think...
We can't have that waiver, no.
Our 8th graders play on...
Yes.
Except football, football. Is it, what is stopping that from happening?
That I don't know. I'd have to look into that. I know they can't. I know if they're in the high school and they're located at the high school as a full-time student, they cannot play middle school sports.
Right.
That I know. But I'm not sure about the...
There's, I mean, I think historically, you know, again, I think having the 8th grade at the high school makes a lot of decisions very black and white. I think with the waiver process, et cetera, it's very gray. And then you get a lot of, there's a lot more discussion going on that hurts people's feelings.
I don't think so recently.
I'm trying to be politically correct. It's really hard sometimes.
Not as recently as this year, though.
But we'll get there.
Yeah.
The applications for the academy, is that like online, easy to find for 7th grade families?
They actually are starting the process now.
Okay.
Yeah. So that information will be going out to families and Ms. Folless's... Ms. Cotillo is including all of Ms. Folless's like high school weekly updates and all that information in the middle school newsletter now to get families exposed to all that. So all of that will be included in that newsletter. But there is an opportunity. I want to put that out there to our families that are tuning in. I'm going to ask Jill to join us again for just a couple of minutes to give an update on where we are with our Director of Finance and Operations search. We do have a search going yielding some potential candidates.
I have the pleasure of chairing that committee.
Yes.
So we did post for our Director of Finance and Operations. We did have some applicants. I think we had three initially. We did some initial screenings of the candidates, looking at experience. And certification was important. So based on that, we had a small interview committee that gathered and we interviewed two of the candidates just to get a better sense, you know, who they are, would they be a good fit for our district? And the committee at this point decided to move one candidate forward right now to Dr. DeFalco to go on to the next step, so.
Yes, and I'm meeting with her tomorrow. She has 10 years Regional Director of Finance experience in school system in Massachusetts, which is really great. And she has five years prior as a single school system finance director. So she has 15 years of school finance and operations experience, which is great. which is, which is great. So I know the committee felt strongly about her candidacy and she and I are meeting tomorrow at noon. We'll see where that goes.
Thank you again for leading that committee.
For getting there.
So hopefully we'll have some news
Yeah.
the next time we meet.
Are we looking to have a start date before July 1st?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we are.
Alright, thank you.
Start today. Start tomorrow.
I know more about accounts payable and accounts receivable and payroll. It's good. It's all good stuff. It is all good stuff. So we're, we'll see where that search goes. But you know, the, our mantra, we'll just, we will leave it open until we have the right thing. There is a field trip request in your packet from Nicole Sacco, who is our Student Council Advisor. It's the annual trip in Hyannis. The spring conference. It's an overnight trip, which is why it's in your packet, allowing our students to go to a statewide conference.
So fun. I make a motion to approve the field trip request for the MASC spring conference for Student Council.
Second.
Motion made by Tammy and second by Tara. Any questions or comments?
Do we know, is there a set number of people that get to participate? Like, how are these kids chosen?
I think they are the offices.
It's 12.
Well, I know, I don't know if that's everybody that's in Student Council. It's a really fun event. Like, I mean, Tori really, my, Tori loved this event when she was on the board of Student Council, so. I'm just wondering who gets chosen? Who are the chosen ones?
Not sure.
It's fun.
Okay, so motion made by Tammy, second by Tara. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous?
I can find out, Tammy, and I'll put it in the update.
Yeah, just curiosity more than, you know, like, does everybody get to go that wants to or, you know? We're talking about inclusivity.
I will find that out. We are there, 7:30 tomorrow morning, if I'll ask. Awesome. And lastly, just a quick update on the, Carrie, I think you asked the question. It was about field trip requirements by the Board of Health. And we had, we've conferred with the Board of Health and there are no requirements or restrictions on anything for field trips moving forward. So I think you had asked the question at the last meeting.
We had it last year, yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure to get back to you.
Like COVID-related questions?
Like what we just approved overnight?
Yeah, no, no masks or vaccines or anything like that.
Like for DC?
All that's been lifted.
Elementary. I think last year, elementary just was too late to plan them once all the restrictions were lifted.
Yeah. So there are no, no restrictions at this time from the Board of Health on anything. Or no recommendations, you know, just run the field trip as is.
Thank you for that update.
Sure.
Moving on to the business office report.
Yes, so in your-
Our new business manager.
Yeah, it's, you have a few documents, the expenditure and revenues report. And I want to just highlight a couple of quick things on the expenditure report and then, of course, answer whatever questions you have. There were three lines that I flagged. Probably did the same thing. Our professional development line, which is the function code 2357. And that line, we were budgeted for, certified budgeted for $99,810. And it's looking like we are $42,000 over in that line. We will be able to, we've just reconciled all of our ESSER dollars. And we have quite a bit of ESSER money left for transportation that we're not going to use. So we'll be able to offset that $42,000 with our ESSER dollars. So that will actually balance itself out. And we'll come to the committee when we make all those changes for your review and approval. So I'm not concerned about that at all. And I'm only jumping to that because the other ones we've already talked about. So I certainly can come back to any of them. But I wanted to highlight that one. The guidance, which is the function code 2450, I'm sorry, 2710. That's just a salary. Those are salaries that were put there that were not initially scheduled to be applied to that line. But the money was in the budget, it just wasn't in the right place. So again, just wanted to bring that to your attention. The network and telecommunications line 4400, that's the last line on sheet one. That's $24,245 over. That's, we're waiting for reimbursement grant to come in. There are two technology reimbursement grants. One will go up to the line Districtwide Information Management, which we've talked about. That's the 1450 line. And then the other, it's a much smaller reimbursement grant that will go to offset the 4400 line. And I'm working with the federal government to get our new sams.gov number. It's our new DUNES number, which is short of me flying to DC to meet with somebody. I'm not sure what else I'm gonna need to do to get that, because they have everything they need. They don't use the DUNES number anymore. It's a new code for federal grants and reimbursements. So that has been a painstaking process to get that number. Once I have the number, I can issue it to those two funds and actually get the reimbursement from the government who's issuing the number. So interesting process there. But I'm certainly, I'm happy to speak to any of the issues that you might or questions you might have. Right now, our bottom line is still, is still very healthy. With all that has been expended, with all that is encumbered, we are still around 1.4 million. So no major, you know, concerns there with the overall budget itself.
Is that 3,300 line right? Because you have, we have 1.6 encumbered, right?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
But remember, we also have a significant amount of transportation.
I just expect to see that plummet because of
Oh, I think-
the new contract and fuel and, and.
Yep, no, thanks for bringing that to the, to my attention, because I, the pupil transportation, we're in year one of a new contract. And so I, particularly with our athletics and our music programs, I think we'll see the transportation line decrease. Also, the agreed upon transportation gasoline rate was 370, 371 a gallon. Right now, as you know, the gas is over that, particularly for diesel. We're paying about $5 a gallon. So we will get and have been getting additional fuel bills on top of our regular transportation because it is beyond the contractual 373 a gallon rate. So.
But with athletics and music, their transportation is ironically right underneath 3,300. Their, their lines are actually going to see the deficit for their transportation.
They're gonna see it there, too. Yep.
So, but it looks like we'll have something to move to cover it there.
Yes, so for instance, our athletics budget, transportation budget, just the fall alone was $36,000, which is half.
Just transportation.
Just transportation is half. So what I've asked the RAD and our music director to do is to actually go back, reforecast the transportation costs for the rest of the winter and spring, so that we actually will know what the deficit is gonna be. Going on the fuel rate that we have
Okay.
and the mileage rate and the weight fees for our bus drivers that we have.
Thank you for being on top of that.
Yep. So they're, not only are they reworking, excuse me, FY24, they are in the midst of reworking the winter and spring transportation for FY23. A lot of moving parts. Are there any other questions? Our personnel report is to be received and placed on file. You will probably hear, if you haven't already, we have had to repost for a foreign language teacher at the high school. She's not on here yet. But she has left for family reasons, which is hugely unfortunate. She was fantastic. Totally out of our control and hers, frankly. So we're very saddened to hear of that, but you will see on the next personnel list a foreign language position. And next, our facilities update.
Good evening.
Welcome.
So industrial boiler came out the day after Thanksgiving and replaced the four pressure relief valves that we have the Meyer grant that's covering. However, two of the valves were bad. Ironically, one was on each boiler, so I had them take the two bad ones and put them on one boiler, so we had one boiler that was running properly without leaking steam. What's happening is the valve's bad, it's allowing steam to leak out. And if we allow that boiler to run, I'm afraid that we may set off the fire alarm. So. We have two boilers. It can run in an emergency situation, but I just choose not to run it right now.
Are they replaced?
They will be back out on 12/28.
They're like the holidays weeks, huh?
Well, it's better, too, because they're gonna have to shut the boilers down to make the repairs. They also, and I forgot to leave that on here, we have a coil up in the upper learning media center that they have to replace as well. They started that back in the summer. They just waited for, were waiting for the coil to come in. So that's gonna be done on the 28th as well. Softball infield is completed. However, we'll have to go back in the springtime and grade it after the snow compacts it, the frost and all that stuff. Still gotta install the pitches, mound and the bases.
But I can vouch for him that he was here until the last day before the frost. On an early Saturday morning, out there with his own equipment.
Yep.
Spreading that.
It's my little pet project, so.
And now you should rest because the ground is frozen, the snow is there, you cannot do anything.
Snow is coming. Mr. Sullivan's been calling me early in the morning already. And it's looking like next week we may be getting something as well, so.
Don't.
Let's hope not.
Well, I know some seniors that are hoping for some days, so.
They're gonna be getting them soon enough. Let's just get to them next week. Yeah, and the middle school, the new VFD drive has been installed. The automated system is backup, working normal as it should. However, with that, it brought on the other circulator pump that runs. We have two circulator pumps, and that pump started leaking again. That pump has been rebuilt recently by Riverdale Plumbing, so I am trying to get them back out here to cover the repairs. It's a lot of money we spent with them. They also did the boiler project at the JFK School, so I feel they should own up to it. Millville Elementary School, another circulator pump. This is a smaller circulator pump that runs on the back of the boiler, rotates the water through the boiler so that the boiler water stays temperature on the boiler. They have a little circuit board inside of them that somehow shorted out. These circulator pumps are only two years old, so I made a phone call to Tako. Tako Pump told me that they only have a one-year warranty on them. I am reaching out to NB Kelly. I'm waiting for them to call me back. They're the company that installed the boiler system. I'm hoping they can warranty it or at least do something for us. Once that circuit board is installed, that circulator pump has to be reprogrammed. So it's a matter of finding somebody that can come out now and back, you know, put the program back in as well, so. Maybe it can be done when the building automation system is upgraded. I don't see why it couldn't, but I don't want to take the chance on buying the pot myself, installing it and risking it shorting out again. I'd rather have a company come out. The little circuit board itself costs like $3,000. That's not a gamble I'm willing to take. We don't have to. And speaking of the building automation system, we've signed the contract with Siemens. We're still waiting for them to get back to us with a start date. I was hoping it'd be Christmas break, but it's not looking that way. However, the building is getting heat and the kitchen has called to have Matt Walker shut the heat down because it gets too hot in there. So the building's
It's all manual.
Not an issue, yeah.
Spaces, yeah.
It's just that it's manual. It's probably the most, not the most efficient way to run the building.
Well, thank you for staying on top of that.
You're welcome. And I will continue to stay on top.
Seems like we have a circulator pump theme going this year.
One after the other.
Thank you.
I do know, we do have like probably 15 circulator pumps in the distance.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
And we have a use of facilities report, request, excuse me. It is the basketball free throw contest that Ms. Thompson does each year. And we're looking for-
Motion to approve.
For that.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Dan and second by Tammy for AFMO nights of Columbus free throw, January 9th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous?
And that is it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So our next school committee meeting, January 12th, 6:00 PM. The workshops that we just scheduled, we will be updated by Jason tomorrow.
Absolutely.
School committee forum before we move into executive session. Did anyone have any? Anything?
I have a few questions. One, one I wanted to just acknowledge the, and Jason, I don't know what we're calling it, but I saw it all over social media. The, the STEAM Day or-
Oh, the Hour of Code.
Hour of Code, right. I knew there was a special name.
Amazon Volunteers. Oh, it was fantastic.
And that was, is it Tom Moore that sort of spearheads that? Thank you for all of those folks that did that. It looks like it was really well received by kids and it's always fun to make connections with, you know, companies like that, that, you know, obviously are gonna be here for a while and get our kids involved. So thank you to his group. I know there's a bunch of people I could see in the pictures. So thank you for that. And my other question is, could we, for our next meeting, just have an athletic update as far as what teams are, you know, I feel like the season just started. What teams are running, where, you know?
I think it would be nice to have the athletic director in.
For what?
Yeah, I think that would be.
Yeah, I mean, just, I don't, you know, I don't know what basketball teams we have and
Sure.
You know, stuff like that.
I think it would be nice to see him again since, and, and like, I just saw the email from you today with the new calendar.
Yeah.
So is it a calendar? You can buy your ticket online for the game?
Yes. You can still get them at the door, too.
So he can give us updates like that?
Yep.
Even though it's a busy season for him.
Sure, he'd be happy to join us.
And just to confirm, we're having a school person at all these games to help alleviate any potential issues?
Yes, yeah.
What do you mean by school person?
Like administrator? Well, I know, like, during volleyball, there were issues and I don't know if that was this year or last year. I kind of get everything blended. But usually there's a person there. When there's an issue, they can address, you know, an unruly fan or-
Yes.
Okay.
There's a myriad of things that can happen. I heard.
We typically have SRO or detail at our indoor games, too.
Yes.
But I don't know if they address like unruly fan, you know, I mean, they would, I mean, if they're super unruly, but you know what I mean? I just-
There was a site administrator at the game.
Okay, thank you. That's, yeah. I just know at some point during volleyball, there, somebody wasn't there and there was issues. In softball, we've had issues and football.
I think the AD did it for hockey in Bellingham.
Yeah, usually. I just want to make sure that's happening. Alright, thank you.
Our AD, he's been at all of the girls' basketball home games so far, so he's very visible at a lot of our sporting events.
Good.
Yeah, he's really out there.
That's all for me.
Anyone else with a update?
I just wish the everyone here and the students and the faculty, staff, parents, residents, happy holidays. We won't meet until after the New Year. A safe and healthy, happy holidays and New Year season.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. You too.
In fact.
Thank you very much.
I just noticed that our meeting says 2022.
Oh, does it?
I was just gonna say, next year.
Till we get that, right?
Capital, the capital, I had someone ask when the next capital group meeting is. Are we waiting to hear MSBA?
At this point, we're gonna wait, okay. We'll meet regardless of the decision, but let's just wait for it.
In January?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait for it. Yeah, and we'll know what to talk about.
Do we have an update on when that is? Is it still the end of December?
The 21st, right?
Yeah, I should know by tomorrow.
Okay.
The meeting is December 21st?
Meeting is December 21st, yeah. So be on the lookout.
Okay. And you're just saying you'll know a time of meeting?
I'll know if we've been invited to attend the meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
And I will be able to communicate with the community. It's like Christmas Eve.
You'll know tomorrow if you have to go on the 21st.
Yes.
To be told.
Alright. Without- Without any other committee forum items, we will take a roll call vote to move into Executive Session. Not to return for adjournment. Chuck?
Yes.
Yes, Tara?
Yes.
Yes. Tammy, yes, Erin, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.